I would like to start with a roll call. Mr. Navarro.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation. Today, we have Cantor Larry Cornet with us for the invocation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As everybody is right, let us pray as a community. As many of you know, Jews all around the world are celebrating Hanukkah. It is not the Jewish Christmas, as some tend to believe, where Christmas is really up here. Hanukkah is more down here. Hanukkah is primarily a holiday of, "They tried to kill us. They failed. We won. Let's eat." But the lesson in lighting candles is important, as we add a candle every day, to remind us that we are filled, the world with our light, in both love and learning. And with that in mind, we pray. Avino Malkin, who our Father, our King, we thank you for this beautiful day, as we come together to celebrate the city of Oceanside and to do her work in her interest. We ask you to remind us that no triumph ever begins with an "I" or "me" statement, but with a "we" statement. And no challenge begins with a "you" statement, but with an "us" statement. Remind us that our public servants at all levels, our first responders and those that make the city run, owe our prayers and our gratitude. We have much to be thankful for this holiday season. Our Creator gave us the ability to learn and to cure new diseases and to treat them. I pray that people get their vaccines and boosters as soon as possible. When one asked, "Well, I'm not sure what is in the vaccine," the reply can be, "Well, you don't know what's in a hot dog, but you'll eat that." In all seriousness, in the final analysis, what unites us always must be stronger than what divides us: our love of community, our love of family, love of friendship, and our love of peace. In Hebrew, baruch atah Hashem, osaha shalom. And in English, blessed are you, Lord our God, bestower of peace, as we say. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Cantor Cornet. Please remain standing and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, justice, and all. Thank you. You may be seated. Oceanside Warriors in the house? Yeah? Come on down. Please come on up. We have tonight a very special celebration for a very special group. They are the Oceanside Warriors, 13 U. And I've got Sean McClave, who's going to explain the different parts of the league. These young men had many battles, starting with, as you know, we don't have a whole lot of fields and kind of get tighter together, guys, you know? It's all right. Look, check these guys out. Fantastic. These are champions for Oceanside. So I do have a proclamation, and it dates in honor of Oceanside Warriors 13 U, American Youth Football California Regional Champions 2021. Whereas the Oceanside Warriors football team, 13 U American Youth Football players, coaches, families, friends, and supporters were recently triumphant at the California Regional Championship Games. And whereas team players, predominantly high school seniors, displayed leadership, dedication, perseverance, team spirit, and have been positive models, role models, and ambassadors for our city of Oceanside. And whereas the Oceanside Warriors 13 U team, coaches, families, and supporters will be traveling to Florida for December 4th through 10th National Championship Games, representing the city of Oceanside. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2021, as Oceanside Warriors 13 U Day. And urge all Oceanside residents to support these phenomenal young people and their families as they strive for excellence. Congratulations and best wishes, you guys. And I'm handing this proclamation certificate to Sean McClave. And Sean, you're going to tell us about what these young men had to deal with in order to get to this spot, how they didn't even know that they were going to be able to go to Florida. So this is a great big surprise for them and their families, and how they're trying to make it and hoping for support from our community here in Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the proclamation. Thank you. This day actually belongs to the boys here. You guys deserve this more than the coaches do. A little bit nervous here. It was a long season. We started really early. A lot of the boys kind of just had their own little cliques. They all had their own little groups. But as the season kept going along, they kind of grew as a family, which was totally awesome, which was super awesome to see as coaches and as fathers, too. They went to the Q Bowl down in San Diego, and they won that. From there, we went to regionals and beat the team from regionals as well. Now we are on our way to Florida to play other teams from Texas, Maryland, Kansas, and Georgia. Yeah. Super exciting. These boys deserve everything that they've worked hard for all season long. They, it just feels like we are now a family, like a huge, huge family. Four of these guys have been here from day one with the Oceanside Warriors, playing from flag all the way up to 13 U right now. The four boys, you guys, hey, you guys deserve it as well. As we go to Florida, like I said, we always say, hey, we don't stop. We keep going. It's one last ride, and we're going to keep this ride going as long as we can. We're going to go over there, and we're going to take that title, right? We're going to go there and take that title, right? Want to give our other quick shout-outs? We have Coach George here. We have Coach Nick here. The other coaches that are not here are Coach Jose, Coach Polo, Coach Henry, Coach Myers, and the head coach, Coach Harry. Yes. We do have a GoFundMe account going for us. It's the 13 U Warriors. It will, any help, any donations of any size will help in cause, will help us take our way all the way to Florida, help these kids in any way possible to get them there, feed them, shower them, get them from point A to point B in vehicles, flights, name it. They deserve it. We need a point of contact. There is Kristi Smith. She can be reached out at, excuse me one second, And also would like to thank the team mom Pumpkin. She has been super awesome all season long. Also would like to thank Kristi Smith. She has been awesome as team's mom as well. I believe, I think that is it. Coaches, anybody? Boys, anybody want to say anything before we walk away?
Warriors, mighty Warriors.
All right. All right. That is it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, for proclaiming this day to us. And 13 Warriors, before we leave, how about you guys bring it in and you break it up? Break it aside. Come on.
Let's do it.
Do it.
Do what?
Bajah, bajah. La batau, uh! La batau, ah! La batau, lau, sah!
Yes, sir. Hey, break it up, break it up.
Do you want a picture with y'all? So if you could, give them the back. But I just want to say a little bit more, just a few more words. And that is because I want to say that we know how tough it's been for these kids to play in the first place. We don't have enough fields. They've had to play at baseball diamonds, sometimes, you know, not being able to find fields. And we're trying so hard to, you know, find places for these kids to play. Right, Chris? Yeah, we're trying so hard. And, and, you know, the lights at the end of the tunnel. But for these kids to go through COVID and basically not really having a field of their own to play on and making these commitments, and then, let me tell you, they weren't even, they didn't even think that they could get to this point. Their regionals, they won against all teams in California to be able to go to Florida. So you have to understand, they did not plan to go to Florida. They're leaving tomorrow. The games start on the 14th. So this is very, you know, they're trying to cut as much as possible, but they need help. And if you can, go to the GoFundMe, please. Because this is something that, you know, they're representing the city of Oceanside, and I truly, truly think that they deserve everything. Did you want to say something, Chris?
So since we were live, I just got a text from a local business, and they're going to give you guys $5,000,000 to help you go to Florida. So they're going to, they're going to get on, we'll get on that link.
Okay, well, that definitely deserves a picture, right, guys? Okay, so can we, who's Thomas? Could you guys take a knee? Would you? Take a knee, because we really want to get. Do you have a?
Say cheat.
Win!
Say win. One last one. Let's say Warriors.
Warriors! Thank you. Congratulations. Represent, guys. Thank you. Well, you're sitting down, but I know that you guys have to fly tomorrow, so you are free to leave if you'd like. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, guys. Big hand. Thank you, fellow council members, for allowing me to do that. Because it was just so exciting when I heard about them. Okay, closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss the status of negotiations involving the Oceanside Police Officers Association Non-Sworn Unit, as well as Item 2A on the agenda, pending litigation in the matter of the national prescription opioid litigation United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, case 17MD2804. With respect to Item 1, there's no action under the Brown Act to report. With regard to Item 2, the council voted 4-0, with Councilmember Rodriguez absent to authorize the city attorney to execute all documents to participate in the distribution of funds under that settlement of litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our consent calendar items. They are Items 4 through 16. I understand there are no requests by the public to poll? Any items?
We do have two items that were polled. We had Items 7 and 14 were polled by the public.
7 and 14. Any other requests to poll by the council? If not, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 7, which has been polled, is approval of a change order in the amount of $31,030 for a total purchase order amount of $505,680 to downtown Ford of Sacramento for the purchase of 11 hybrid vehicles for the Oceanside Police Department, and authorization for the Financial Services Director or designee to execute the change order.
And we have Katie Taylor, who's a registered member of the public, to speak.
Okay. Good evening, all. Regarding the 11 hybrid vehicle purchase for the Oceanside Police Department, my first question is why they were ordered from a fleet dealer in Sacramento? What year model vehicles were ordered, and what year model vehicles are going to be delivered? How many proposals were received before the order was placed with downtown Ford of Sacramento? And more importantly, why a fleet dealer in Sacramento? Since My Way or Highway Sanchez has proven she is driven by politics, was there a political benefit to Mayor Sanchez that the order was placed with a Sacramento dealer? This reeks of possibly the same political dirty tricks Mayor Sanchez displayed on her open attack on Donnie D. and the San Diego Rescue Mission during the November 17th council meeting. Why is she still fighting to replace San Diego Rescue Mission with Interfaith Services? I am currently reviewing records on the amount of money directed by the city of Oceanside to Interfaith. Seems there may be a link. I have no proof, but neither did Mayor Sanchez when she attacked and defamed Donnie D. and the San Diego Rescue Mission. Thank you.
Thank you. I heard a couple of questions there. Chief, did you want to respond to that? Thank you very much, ma'am.
I'm happy to answer questions.
No.
Okay.
The question's not directed to you. And for the record, I do not have any connection, nor do I know anyone at Ford of Sacramento. Thank you.
The Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Hameed Bahaduri, interim Public Works Director. The reason we use that dealership is that we are part of statewide purchasing pool. And there are certain dealers who participate in that pool. That gives us a very big advantage in terms of our purchasing power. We get discounted rates that local dealers cannot offer at competitive price. But nonetheless, we always check the local dealers anyways. And in this case, this dealership is the one that we go to because of the significant discounts and savings that we can get by buying as part of our pool.
Hameed, did you discuss this at all with me?
With who?
Discuss Item Number 7 at all with me?
No.
Thank you.
I have not discussed this item with any members of the council.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion? Oh, Councilmember Weiss, sorry.
Move approval.
There's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 14, that's adoption of a resolution approving an agreement with the County of San Diego in the amount of $235,220 for the Operation Stone Garden Fiscal Year 2020 Grant, appropriation of these funds for the police department, and authorization for the city manager or designee to execute the grant agreement and all related grant documents.
Sandra Martinez.
Hello, everybody. I totally support the Oceanside Police Department and Board of Security, of course. It's a daunting task. I can't even imagine having to tackle it. But this Stone Garden operation, the program is supposed to support enhanced cooperation and coordination among Customs and the Border Patrol, U.S. Border Patrol, local tribal territorial state, and federal agencies. According to the National Immigration Forum, the goal is to improve overall border security. To do this, you encourage local cooperation between everybody. And one of those agencies, or one of the strategies, excuse me, is the Federal Secure Borders Initiative. Quote, "We recognize that illegal immigration undercuts the rule of law, threatens our national security, and imposes particular public safety and economic strains on our border communities. We must gain full control of our borders to prevent illegal migration and potential security breaches. Continue the distinct capability enhancements required for border security and border protection." Sounds great, right? One of the metrics they use to measure the success of the program is the number of arrests, including immigration-related arrests and the value of drugs seized arising from the operation. Now, as we know, there have been federal, I don't know what to call them, where people are not supposed to be arrested if they're immigrants. So I don't see how that metric is actually going to work to tell if the program is successful. Right now, we have open borders. So thus, from what I can see, there's really no more need for border security as the U.S. Border Patrol is neither vetting nor halting entry for non-citizens to the U.S. These funds can do nothing to secure our borders as the Oceanside Police Department must work with federal agencies, and the federal agencies are not securing the borders. So you understand, you can't work with someone who's not going to do something. How can you do that? So the federal government has clearly stated they will not and do not intend to secure borders. As much as I want to increase funding for our police department, I'm not sure it would be appropriate to accept these funds as it would be impossible to use them for the designated use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would like to have a police chief come up and maybe address the concerns brought forth and, you know, maybe more details on what these funds are utilized for with respect to the intent of the receipt of the funds.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Our role in this effort is part of essentially the Southern California region of law enforcement agencies on both land and water. Our biggest impact in the last couple of years has been on land-based drug interdiction activity along I-5. We play a bigger strategic role out on the waterways with the vessel that we received through Stone Garden funding about six or seven years ago. When it comes to keeping the, more of the human trafficking side from coming to our shores, the arrests that we have made and been a part of have been with drug traffickers. We don't arrest people for immigration violations. That's not our role in this. We've been receiving this funding for several years now. It's strategic in nature, and I think it's a continued value to our community to be participating.
Can I, can I speak?
Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is it's additional funding for resources. We are a coastal city. Drugs are being trafficked in. We need to have the resources, the training, the, you know, the infrastructure to be able to accommodate and stop any drug trafficking and be able to be available on a regional level when need be. And these resources help reinforce those efforts, is what I'm hearing.
Absolutely. We're a part of the effort in this region. It doesn't solely rest on our shoulders. We work in conjunction with many other agencies.
Great. Very good. Thank you for coming and speaking on this item, but I feel very comfortable with the additional resources that we could help stop, you know, drug trafficking and any other crimes committed. So I'd like to move approval.
There's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is Item Number 17, under General Items. And that is approval of a professional services agreement with C.R. Associates of San Diego in an amount not to exceed $2.3 million for the design of the widening of College Boulevard from Waring Road and Barnard Drive to Old Grove Road, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. We have a report by Jonathan Smith, the consultant and the project manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Jonathan Smith, and I am the consultant project manager for the design of the widening of College Boulevard project. Thank you for this opportunity to present the professional services agreement for the design of the widening of College Boulevard. Staff recommends that the city council approve a professional services agreement with C.R. Associates of San Diego in the amount not to exceed $2,335,965. Also to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all necessary documents.
Better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There we go. Okay. On June 4th, 2021, the city advertised a request for proposal for professional services related to the design of College Boulevard widening project. On July 7th, 2021, proposals were received from two consultants, Michael Baker International and C.R. Associates. College Boulevard is classified as a six-lane major roadway from Waring Road to Old Grove. College Boulevard is currently constructed with four lanes. An example of the proposed improvements per the FEIR is the widening of the right-turn lanes to facilitate trucks turning onto Waring Road. Another example is curb extensions or hopouts to reduce the pedestrian crossing at Marvin. College Boulevard will be widened to six lanes to a six-lane major roadway from Olive Drive to Old Grove Road. Two firms submitted proposals in response to the RFP. The proposals were evaluated by city selection committee comprised of city staff from CIP Water Utilities Traffic and a representative from the city of Carlsbad. C.R. Associates was selected as the most qualified firm due to their specialized expertise and experience with similar projects. Task 1, concept design, proposed cost is $111,040. Task 1 includes investigations, field observations, preparation of draft typical roadway sections, excuse me, and opinion of probable cost of construction. I'm going to put my eyes on this. Task 2, design development, proposed cost is $439,420. Task 2 includes utility coordination, preparation of a utility map to identify any utility conflicts, surveying and right-of-way mapping, as well as geotechnical investigation. Task 3, construction documents, is approximate cost of $1591,425. This task includes construction plans and support documents necessary to bid and construct the project and provide right-of-way acquisition support. Finally, task 4, project management meetings and coordination is proposed at a cost of $184,080. This includes project development team meetings, progress reports, preparation and submittal of the NCTD right-of-entry permit, as well as the public utilities authorization requests. Sufficient funds are available for tasks 1, 2, and 4. Future funding of $4 million is anticipated from the Major Theraphaire Program for fiscal year 2223, which will be combined with the remaining project fund balance for task 3, the preparation of construction documents. This is a list of potential grant programs. This is a list of potential grant programs that could add additional funds to the project. This here is the list of—this is a percentage of grant wins by the proposed consultant, C.R. Associates. So we're going to put them to work and get us more money. Staff recommends that the city council approve a professional services agreement with C.R. Associates of San Diego in an amount not to exceed $2,335,965, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all necessary documents. With that, that ends my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
There are no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the design from Oceanside Boulevard to Old Grove be consistent with the Rancho Del Aro specific plan design guidelines, and with that, I will move approval of staff recommendation.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, I would like to second this. This is a heavy traffic area, and I remember—I'm responsible for dropping the kids off to school in the morning, and once we roll up onto this intersection, it's a sit-and-wait. And so definitely looking forward—I'm sure a lot of Oceanside residents are looking forward to some much-needed relief in traffic, and so this is your hard-earned tax dollars going to work, and I'm excited to second this item. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4O. Sanchez abstaining.
Thank you. Let's go to public communications on off-agenda items. Item number 21.
On item number 21, we have 10 speakers on item number 21.
Let's start.
Our first speaker is Graham Fraser, to be followed by Sandra Martinez, to be followed by Katie Taylor.
Mayor Sanchez, members of the city council, as you see, I'm Graham Fraser, 40-year resident of Oceanside. I'm here to speak in favor of the—and thank you for the approving the selection of the San Diego Rescue Mission to operate the homeless navigation center at the former Oceanside continuation high school site. I think that was a very, very wise choice. I understand all the contracts have been signed, and plans are now in the city for approval for the facilities. So I'd hope that the city gets those out quickly so that the construction can proceed and get help for these people that are in our city. I've been a supporter of the Bread of Life/San Diego Rescue Mission for many, many years. In fact, I provided the kitchen equipment that is currently there, and so I'm proud that they're going to be relocating that to the new facility and incorporating it into the project. Finally, I'd like to say that the sole mission of the San Diego Rescue Mission is to provide housing and rehabilitation to any and all homeless recommended by the city housing. They will not be making any decisions about who will be admitted and who will not. That will come from the city. So I'm very happy that that project is proceeding. That would be a great benefit to the community, and particularly to those poor souls that will take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Martinez, to be followed by Katie Taylor, to be followed by Patty K. I'll pass that around.
Oh, I can't. Hold on. That's better.
I don't really need this.
You're each receiving a handout with supporting documentation written by Dr. David Martin. It has information pertinent to the actions you take for public health. EcoHealth Alliance was the NGO that was used by Anthony Fauci to funnel millions of taxpayer dollars to China's bioweapon defense lab, the Wuhan Institute of Virology. In 2015, Peter Daszak of EcoHealth Alliance said, "To sustain a funding base beyond the crisis, we need to increase the public understanding of the need for medical countermeasures such as a pan-coronavirus. A key driver is the media, and the economics will follow the hype. We need to use that hype to our advantage to get to the real issue. Investors will respond when they see profit at the end of the process." The hype here refers to getting the public to believe in what is now a gene therapy being marketed as a vaccine. Note, in his statement, he says nothing about this being for health. It is all about for profit. This is without question a financial racketeering domestic terrorism campaign, which has international implications and violates at least seven criminal felony laws in the U.S. I'm going to list two of them—or three of them. Acts of domestic terrorism resulting in the death of American citizens. Anything that is designed to coerce the public into taking actions that they would not otherwise take is considered domestic terrorism, such as no jab, no job. By Daszak's own admission, we need the media to create hype to get the public to accept a thing being called a vaccine. That is by definition coercion. That is a felony. It is domestic terrorism, and we must call it what it is. Number two, funding and conspiring acts of terror. In 1998, Anthony Fauci funded research that generated an infectious replication defective clone of coronavirus specifically to target human tissue, which was SARS. That was patented in 2002 before the SARS outbreak. Conspiring to criminal commercial activity. To get an emergency use authorization, you have to disqualify every other treatment, as was done with vitamin C, zinc, hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin, et cetera. Fauci said the only way out of the pandemic was a vaccine. How's that working out? Thousands died and continue to die due to people intentionally not being given these treatments, also they could have an emergency use authorization and profits. You're now aware of a few of the felonies. I believe that supporting these acts through statements and funding through your positions of power and using public lands to continue the commission of crimes, you would be colluding in these crimes. You have the Fauci dossier, a list of criminal violations, supporting evidence, and a slide presentation in front of you. You now have accurate information to make decisions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Katie Taylor, to be followed by Patty K., to be followed by Paul Perkins.
Good evening once again. When something is perfectly said, there is no reason to try and paraphrase or put it in your own words. It is best just to quote the best and let that stand as your statement. For clarification in this statement, SDRM represents San Diego Rescue Mission, once again regarding the November 17th council meeting. Sorry to break it to you. Max Dispati is a political activist and primarily focuses on the LGBT+ entities, political agenda, aka identity politics. SDRM has clinical psychiatrists and physicians' support with overwhelming credentials and training for anyone that's homeless. If anything, Max should be asking SDRM for training on how to best help the homeless. Max has made zero efforts behind the scenes to visit with or get to know SDRM's San Diego Rescue Mission, intake process, tour their successful facility in San Diego. No time to go into the details here, but Max LGBTQ+ entities doctrine is based in Marxist theology called collective identity or group identity. Solidarity and collective identity operate to blur the distinction between individual and group interests, undermining the premises on which such utilitarian models operate. Max was trying to force and bully San Diego Rescue Mission—that is not currently a part of the group identity—to submit, or Max threatened to label them unsafe. Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. This is your statement, your insight and clarity in the actions by Max, which are aided and abetted by Mayor Sanchez, are greatly appreciated. This statement details perfectly what My Way or the Highway Mayor Sanchez and Max tried to pull off on Donnie D. and the San Diego Rescue Mission at the November 17th council meeting. It was purely despicable. Based on their actions, I filed a complaint with the city attorney, Mullen. On behalf of myself and other Oceanside residents, I requested my complaint be on record for alter review for tonight's meeting. My complaint started as follows. Attorney Mullen, the purpose of this email is to call out Mayor Sanchez for her rude, biased, defamatory remarks against the San Diego Rescue Mission and its president, Mr. Donnie D. at the November 17th council meeting. The mayor's diatribe, perspurious behavior towards Donnie D. and the San Diego Rescue Mission, the mayor's comments and actions highlight citizens' concerns regarding her motives. The fact the mayor made these comments apparently without any documentary support is unbecoming, reprehensible, and libelous. This is the kind of thing that will get Oceanside—the city of Oceanside—into a lawsuit.
Thank you very much.
Patty K., to be followed by Paul Perkins, to be followed by Mas Rosen.
Good evening. To continue with Katie's and others' concerns, I want to emphasize that San Diego Rescue Mission has a wonderful reputation. At the June 30th council meeting, before voting for the homeless facility vendor was taken, Mayor Sanchez did make clear her preference for interfaith. After the vote was taken, I do not remember any congratulations or welcoming to San Diego Rescue Mission. The next agenda item had been started before the audience even knew who had been awarded the contract. Then, at the November 17th meeting and the discussions with Max Dispati and Donnie D., it was concerning that the mayor was dissatisfied with the Rescue Mission's information on the training already in place to prevent discrimination on any level. Paul Armstrong even listed credentials, qualifications of those who provide the training. The mayor then asked Donnie D. if he would agree to additional training for his staff, and when he tried to speak further about it, she gavelled him silent, saying he was out of order. This was shocking and quite frankly embarrassing to those of us watching. At the closing of this agenda item on November 17th, Mayor Sanchez indicated that she had heard the same information as Max about problems with the downtown facility in San Diego with the gay community. She never offered specific reports, written testimony, data of any kind to support her claims. Even Councilmember Cory Jensen asked if there were documented problems we are speaking of, or are we just speaking? The mayor did not reply to Cory and instead moved on to a vote. The question becomes, what next, Mayor? Based on the mayor's actions on November 17th, we began looking into other statements she has made regarding the Rescue Mission. There is a revealing interview on KOC T. August 6, 2021, where she indicated there was still an opportunity to reverse the decision on the vendor or the homeless facility. That remark alone is very troubling. To mitigate any legal exposure from the mayor's defamatory comments or adverse effects on public donations to the Rescue Mission, it is imperative that the mayor and council offer a written apology to San Diego Rescue Mission and Donnie D. When a problem like this surfaces, often the answer is follow the money. To that end, we have asked, requested several documents from the city, and they will be extensively reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Perkins, to be followed by Mas Rosen, to be followed by Michelle Lustig.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members, everyone else. My name is Paul Perkins. I'm longtime born in San Diego, raised—I'm actually born in Coronado, raised in Del Mar, and currently choose to live in Oceanside, this beautiful city here. Love America very, very much. I have currently started a nonprofit Oceanside Dog Beach Initiative. I think it's time that we don't any longer have to drive down to Del Mar or Coronado Ocean Beach for our dogs to have an off-leash privilege. At this time, I have also started a petition on change.org. I now have over 1,800 signatures. I have emailed to all the representatives here, the council members. I did hear back from Ms. Jensen and was able to talk to her about it. At this point, my counterpart, Mr. Rosen, he's got a PowerPoint slide shows where we are proposing the dog beach, the off-leash dog beach, and so I'd like to bring him up and reserve—I reserve the rest of my time.
No, sorry.
Okay.
You get three minutes, and you have 1:42—1 minute 42 seconds left.
Okay. No, it's fine. The proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rosen, to be followed by Michelle Lustig, to be followed by Joyce Kanin.
Yes, hello, everybody. I'm Mas Rosen. I'm friends with Paul here. We've started the Oceanside Dog Beach Initiative and a non-for-profit organization, but we want your support. We have kind of a provisional proposal that we're thinking about, that the public has responded to and feels very positive about. We have—we're presenting it off-leash. We wanted to maybe do some seasonal hours according to how Del Mar does their dog beach, so we're listening to all the premier dog beaches, Huntington Beach, Obie, Del Mar. We're all part of a consortium at this point. So we're listening to how they presented it. We're trying to do the same thing to be successful. We're also talking about having some supplemental cleanup according to some of the bylaws and volunteers that we have here at the, at the Inc., the non-for-profit. There's plenty of parking in the location, natural boundaries, all already supported by Cory here, our council member, and she says it's time. And then also, there's an agenda item for Parks and Recs, their work plan and the goal to get ad-dog parks. So we would like to try to be involved with them as well. The location is as such—it's towards the harbor, the bordering, the harbor entrance down to the San Luis Rey River. There's lots of parking, bathrooms, there's some residential, not very much, and there is a playground there this week today. So that's our proposal, is to use that area. Why is this good for Oceanside? Well, we would like to become a premier city that offers dog-friendly beach access off-leash. We think that that's going to attract people. We have an issue now where we don't keep our visitors here. Actually, our websites actually point our visitors to go to another beach. So instead of keeping the commerce and keeping everything here, we're recommending that they move on. We want to provide a true pet-friendly location here. All the new hotels and developments, restaurants are all pet-friendly. Provide, what else? Economic impact, we can increase the parking revenues, and then we'll also help to clean up the beach as well. We understand there are some concerns over the 1,800 signatures we received. We have had some comments to the negative. The main one is people don't tend to pick up after their dogs. So the idea that having a dog beach would accelerate that process, we don't believe. We don't believe that a dog beach will increase or decrease the amount of fecal matter left on the streets today. There's watershed issues. We're going to talk to people involved there, and there's a children's playground there, so that would have to be some kind of consideration. So it's something we just want to thank you from Dog Park Beach, the Oceanside Dog Beach Inc.
Thank you very much.
Our 1,800 supporters, so thank you very much.
Michelle Lustig, to be followed by Joyce Kanin, to be followed by Mike Richardson.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. So glad to be here tonight. I'm a new resident here in Oceanside, just purchased my first home after seven years. Looking all along the coast here in Oceanside, my partner and I are thrilled to be new residents and really enjoying everything that Oceanside has to offer. I'm here in support of us considering to have an off-leash dog beach. I did live down in Solana.
So glad to be here tonight. I'm a new resident here in Oceanside, just purchased my first home after seven years. Looking all along the coast here in Oceanside, my partner and I are thrilled to be new residents and really enjoying everything that Oceanside has to offer. I'm here in support of us considering to have an off-leash dog beach. I did live down in Solana Beach for the last seven years, where I was at Dog Beach in Del Mar very often. But again, when it came time to become a homeowner, this is where I chose to be. So I respectfully ask that you consider having that become a formal agenda item where the issues that have been raised can be discussed and vetted and thought about so that we can consider adding that really important benefit to the residents and the visitors of Oceanside. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Joyce Kanin, to be followed by Mike Richardson, to be followed by Alejandro Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and City Council members. I attended the Oceanside City Council meeting on June 30th, and since the council members were strongly in favor of the San Diego Rescue Mission getting the contract, I thought it was a done deal. The San Diego Rescue Mission is going to operate the facility at no cost to the city, saving Oceanside a million dollars. Why doesn't the mayor want to save the city a million dollars?
Thank you.
Mike Richardson, to be followed by Alejandro Sanchez, to be followed by Drew Andrioff.
Good evening. My name is Mike Richardson. I'm a native of Oceanside of 80 years. I can't even believe it myself. I support the council's decision to award the management of the homeless shelter to San Diego Rescue Mission. Esther, it's time for you to stop harassing them and accept the majority vote.
Thank you.
Alejandro Sanchez.
Honorable mayor, city council members, and staff. My name is Alejandro Sanchez. I've been in the area for many, many years. I'm an activist, a true activist, not a BS, of course. You know, running around in Oceanside, find out that we have serious, serious issues here and for the homeless services that are, they're not well provided for them. I've seen all these nonprofit organizations, all mediocrity, that they're trying to advocate for their own interests, you know? But very honestly with you, I'd rather have anybody to, you know, to run these programs, these homeless programs in Oceanside, rather than choose Norcan Solutions or Change, for example, where if you're not Republican, you dead boy, you know? They really know how to discriminate people. I've been there with them, and you know, what's up? You know? I'm telling you, something is going on huge here. Just take an example of what happened with my uncle. Just recently, he's been getting ticket after ticket. Even though he's an honorable man, he's been serving so proudly to the city of Oceanside. Red of Life, for 15 years volunteering, zero money. Now, he's living in a trailer motorhome with his wife, a Filipino girl. Oh, by the way, my uncle's a United States citizen. Think about that. But what happens right now here in Oceanside, you have these people knocking at his vehicle and telling him, you know what, you got to move your vehicle. Every day, my uncle moves around and gets tickets all the time, six tickets. What enforcement do not care about it? The city doesn't care about it? He's an elderly man, elderly man, 71 years old. We're supposed to advocate for these people. Now, big problem that we have is that we don't have a monitoring system, period. We have to monitor these bastards that are, you know, they're getting the money, but they're not providing the right services for these people. It's a time to investigate how they provide the services to these people. And how are we going to help these elderly people that they get in the streets, especially those who live in motorhomes? Giving tickets, they're not going to help them. On the contrary, think about that. They don't have no money. My uncle gets almost nothing for exercise. Living in his motorhome and getting tickets is not going to help him. We need to find a solution. Or I'll be ready for a lawsuit because I'm willing to help him very, very soon. Parkway is helping these people. After telling them that they were going to kick them out of their properties over there, they were not able to do that. I think we need to get a solution. We, it's a time to get a commission to oversight, to oversight and watch anybody who's running homeless programs here in this community. By the way, I'm an Oceanside resident. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Drew Andrioff, District One. Yeah, I'm going to say some of my comments that have already been made tonight regarding San Diego Rescue Mission. I haven't had a chance to interact with them. Donnie D. came to me a couple of months ago and said, you know, we're looking to provide a proposal to Oceanside and operate a homeless shelter. And I said, great, sounds like a good idea. And the more I talked with Donnie, the more I understood the program and the more I liked that they were going to be able to self-sufficiently fund the program annually. I thought, wow, that's great. You don't normally hear that from homeless shelter. And so I was kind of taken aback at the last meeting when I heard the allegations made by Max and by our mayor. So I wanted to look into it. And I reached out to Max and I asked, is there any evidence of these allegations? Which, there was none. So I, you know, frankly, I'm a little bit concerned at the direction. And Esther, I'd like to speak to you directly, and I don't want you to take this as an attack. It's just, you're our mayor, and in that role, you're supposed to be a leader for our city. And what I'd like for you to do is make a public apology. I think, I think you, I think they deserve that. And I think that the Rescue Mission is going to do good work here in Oceanside. And I think we need to give them a chance. They have operated day one here in Oceanside, and already they're being attacked by the mayor. I don't, I don't think that's right. I know your preference was for interfaith, and interfaith does a great job of doing what they do. And I think competition's healthy. I think we should allow Rescue Mission to have the chance to operate. And if we find issues with it, we can come back and recess. But Esther, I would like for you to make apology. I think it's the right thing to do. That's all I have. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Steve Maschu.
Hi, I'm Steve Maschu from North Coast Village and tonight from Save Oceanside Sand. On June 21st of this year, council voted, I think it was unanimous, to get a million bucks for sand on the beach. And shortly, right after that vote came, I believe Kyle Cogur announced that, oh, our scoop permit had expired. We haven't heard anything about what the status of that is, if somebody's working on it, when it's going to happen, and where that money is going to get spent. But we'd sure like to see some sand on the beach before the next summer season. And our beaches still need it. Have we determined if the, and I think the vote was really to get the contractor in the El Corazon area to talk, start talking to them about the quality of sand and can we bring the sand in? We haven't heard whether that sand is acceptable, if there's any other alternative approaches. But we've got an awful lot of barren beaches down there. Is there someone on the city staff now who has the tasking to track and take action once the scoop permit is approved? So if we do get it approved, are we getting things moving? Because some of these contracts are going to take a long time to get started. Getting the, any kind of trucks or permits and meeting all of the time limits for Runyon and all the other types of things, it gets very difficult to schedule and get done in time. We also believe that we need to get that position that we talked about at previous board, city council meetings. And I understand you're going to vote on December 15th. We hope you do vote for that and establish that coastal zone program management position because you really need somebody to focus on all these kind of beach activities that are going on. We also think we need an alternative path for getting beach, sand on the beach in South Oceanside. And one way would be to piggyback onto the dredging contract. That dredging contract is now being let and competed with, from the Army Corps of Engineers, and we need to get that added on so that we can put some funds onto that contract and get sand maybe piped in onto those beaches. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hamid is here, and he can respond to your questions. Unfortunately, it's not agendized. But I believe that staff has been requested, in fact, those same questions about what is the status of the opportunistic permit. So I'm hoping to hear from staff soon. Thank you very much. Oh, Councilmember Rodriguez, did you want to?
Yeah, just, I know this is off agenda, just a couple of items really quick. The dog beach dynamic, love what I'm hearing, but stay away from change.org. The reason being is you don't get to keep the emails. So how are you going to correspond and organize and all those variables? So I highly recommend you get like a WordPress website, collect those emails, and restart that petition so you guys can really rally the troops on anything you guys want to advocate for. And thank you for all the speakers for coming out. I'm glad we're moving forward on a shelter. And I think we're going to see some huge success from that contract. So, but thank you for coming out and speaking.
Thank you. So we're now six o'clock on public hearing items. We do have two items this evening. I'm going to start with item number 18. Adoption of a resolution for the adjustment of community risk reduction fees, including providing for an annual consumer price index, EPI increase, approval of a professional services agreement with Bricer LLC for report submittal process for service providers who inspect, test, and maintain fire protection systems with the city of Oceanside in accordance with Title 19 Public Safety Division 1, and authorization for the city manager to, or designate, to execute the agreement, and authorization of the addition of a fire safety specialist position within the fire department. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing, request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff. Staff.
Staff. Staff. Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
The city clerk's office has not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you very much. So we begin testimony with David Parsons, Fire Chief, Fire Division Chief, Fire Marshal.
Good evening. David Parsons, Fire Marshal, Division Chief, Oceanside Fire Department. Thank you for having me tonight. Here to discuss adoption of a resolution adjusting community risk reduction fees, approval of the compliance engine, and authorization of a new position. Staff recommends city council adopt a resolution for the adjustment of community risk reduction fees, including providing for an annual consumer price index increase, approve a professional services agreement with Bricer LLC for a report submittal process for service providers who inspect, test, and maintain fire protection systems within the city of Oceanside in accordance with Title 19 Public Safety Division 1, and authorize the city manager or designate to execute the agreement and authorize the addition of a fire safety specialist position within the fire department. Background. Fire Department Community Risk Reduction Division is responsible for life safety throughout the city. This is achieved through community education, enforcing fire and life safety codes, plan review, fire investigation, fire inspection, hazardous materials regulations, special event review, vegetation management, and more. The fire department, working with the city manager and in accordance with city council policy to systematically review fees, proposes to annually adjust fees based on inflation and cost recovery, reduce some fees, add and clarify others. In 2016, C R R fees for construction were modified and included as a percentage of building department fees. In 2017, community risk reduction-specific construction fees were adjusted for inflation based on consumer price index, and that was the first time since 2010. In 2019, C R R fees were adjusted, clarified, or reduced following a review of plan check time utilization. This year, in 2021, the C R R division identified that land development review fees were not, were often not charged a cost recovery fee. Also, the fire department, based on review of call data, determined it was necessary to add a fee for non-emergency use of Oceanside Fire Department resources. Technological changes, coupled with the recent history of out-of-compliance life safety systems in the city, has resulted in a significant lapse in compliance with inspection, testing, and maintenance. In regards to the fee changes, there are four primary objectives to the fee changes. We'd like to adopt an annual consumer price index increase, modify existing fees, add a non-emergency fee, and add the compliance engine tracking system. Number one, adopt the CPI urban San Diego as an annual inflation increase on the fiscal year rounded up to the nearest dollar. Previous fee changes have been intermittent, resulting in a fee structure consistently below cost recovery. When, when we did do those adjustments, as seen in our background, this resulted in very large changes, whereas now changes will be smaller and incremental, improving customer service and community safety. Customer service will be improved by having resources to provide faster turnaround on inspections. Number two, modify, add, clarify, and/or eliminate fees. The division performed a time utilization review. The division identified several one-size-fits-all fees adversely affecting smaller permit types. And the example of that is high piled storage, and I can explain that. Some permit types were deemed unnecessary based on the risk and other factors. And the example for that is food cart vendors. New systems have been adopted into the fire code, and the example of that is carbon dioxide beverage systems. And it is necessary to add a cost recovery fee for the land development, and the examples of those are grading and engineering plan review, previously not recovered for cost due to changes in the methods of collecting those fees, as discussed in the background from other departments. In total, we're proposing 62 fee increases, 29 decreases, and 18 unchanged. The example I'd like to provide on that high piled storage is that we had just one fee for that, and there really is quite a, quite a range of small business to large business that that permit affects. And we were having to make adjustments on the fly. And we want to properly and appropriately charge those fees based on the complexity and size of the system. Number three, we'd like to add a fee for non-emergency use of Oceanside Fire Department resources when a comparable service is available. Example for this is an assisted living facility who calls 911 for what we term a lift assist or a back-to-bed, and what we've learned potentially to shift cost or liability from the facility. This, of course, would not be applicable if 911 is called or for an ill or injured person and/or a medical assessment is performed. We can show up if we find there is a need. We will, of course, provide services. Number one, we will never leave somebody on the floor. We'll always take care of the patient first, deal with anything after that. This assessment is to ensure accountability. It's not, it's likely not to revenue, generate much revenue. It's just to place accountability in appropriate place and appropriate use of resources and city tax dollars. And I do have personal experience with that myself as a fire captain on an engine, seeing that occur where we would show up to someone on the floor in a living, in assisted living facility, essentially stating, I told them I wasn't hurt, I don't need, I don't need 911, I just need help back into my bed with two to three staff members standing around the person. That's what this is looking to address. Number four, the compliance engine by Bricer is a reporting system that connects the fire department, system owners, and contractors. Fire and life safety systems are legally required to be inspected, tested, and maintained. The record of that is also legally required to be reported to the fire department and system owner-manager. Changes in technology have rendered old methods obsolete and ineffective. We are still receiving once every couple of weeks a fax that comes into our fax machine on this subject. But there's clearly much more of this work being done, and there's no transmittal method of, that is being used right now from the contractors. We've seen real-world consequences of this, unfortunately, in failed private hydrant systems within mobile home parks. And, but more specifically to the business community, you'll have a small business trying to open in a strip mall. They have a shared system that that strip mall is responsible, responsible for. And that, that business can't get those records either from the owner or from the contractor, and is having trouble showing that we have a compliance system to be able to have people safely use these buildings. So we're trying to address that with this system called the, called the compliance engine. As well, we're going to ensure that, for example, private hydrant systems in mobile home parks are maintained as required by code. And I think we know some examples of that recently. Revenue from the fee changes in the new reporting system will fund a new position with, within community risk reduction. The new position will provide quality assurance and follow-up for the compliance engine. Also, many inspections are currently being performed by part-time fire inspectors who are inconsistently available, resulting in delays occasionally. Although unlikely based on a conservative based on a conservative fiscal analysis. Funds from an open part-time position can provide for any shortfall that may occur. Finally, the Police and Fire Commission recommended approval 7-0 at their regularly scheduled meeting on November 18th. Staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution for the adjustment of community risk reduction fees, including providing for an annual consumer price index increase, approve a professional services agreement with Bryser LLC for a report submittal process for service providers who inspect, test, and maintain fire protection systems within the city of Oceanside in accordance with Title 19 Public Safety Division 1, and authorize the city manager or designate to execute the agreement and authorize the addition of a fire safety specialist position within the fire department. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mellon?
Mayor and council has been brought to my attention that the chart that is attachment one to the staff report that is, the resolution is proposed to approve does not include the fee listed on page two of the staff report under the third bullet point, addition of a fee for non-emergency use of the fire department resources when a comparable service was available to the requister. So we would request that should there be a motion to adopt the fees as proposed by staff, that it include the authority to make that change, and the proposed fee would based upon, be based upon FEMA-approved reimbursement rates.
Thank you.
Correct, Mr. Deputy Chief? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. This, this is a public hearing. At this time, we are asking for anyone who wishes to give their input, please rise, approach the podium, and please give your name, and then you can, you may speak for up to three minutes. I see no one rising. Do we have any requests to speak in writing, Mr. Navarro?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and go to Councilmember Weiss.
I just want to make sure that the back-to-bed fee goes to the facility, not necessarily the patient. Is that correct?
Councilmember Weiss, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council, that is correct. That is going to be a facility fee, not a patient.
Thank you. With that clarification and the city attorney's recommendation, I move approval staff recommendation.
With the added language. Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Very good. Thank you for bringing this before us. I think the item I'm most excited about is the addition of the fire safety specialist. I think it's long overdue, and I'm really glad to see that. Can you just clarify the salary amount listed? It states it would normally cost about $123,000 for the position, but in, in the prorated index, and then also for fiscal year '22 and '23, it's only showing 67. Is that being subsidized by something, or is this, is, what are you breaking out of that to establish the 67,000? Is it, portion of it coming from general fund, others from these fees? How is that allocated?
Councilmember Rodriguez, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council, that, that is just, like you said, it's a prorated amount of the total. With the new fees, we can fully fund that position. We do have a backup plan with a part-time position that we can use it, but we, we were conservative on the analysis, so we're very comfortable that that will cover it. And again, as you saw, that's the fully burden salary and benefits.
No, I, I understand that. Very good. Yeah, I'm really excited to see that. I think it's much needed, and it'll bring some relief on a lot of those business and development applications where we have somebody readily available, so I would like to second the motion.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, I was just wondering, do we know what that FEMA standard fee is, and how many back-to-bed calls do we actually go on?
I'll let Chief Lawrence describe the fee.
Sir, Honorable Mayor, members of council, Pete Lawrence, acting deputy chief within the fire department. The FEMA rate is based on the amount of time that the personnel spend, so if we go with the engine and the three personnel, and we pick up the individual, and it's done in 30 minutes, then it will be 30 minutes of the, the time, so it's going to be approximately, let's say, $200 because we bill for the equipment, we bill for the time, et cetera. So it's, if we obviously had to spend longer, then the, the cost would go up. It's based on actual time spent using approved personnel rates.
Okay, great. And the compliance engine, that's really exciting for, to have all the documentation on the inspection so readily available, and everybody will get them much quicker than they're getting them right now. So that's really exciting. So I, I really support this.
We agree. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a question, and if you, Chief, if you could, please describe the nexus between the CPI, the Community Price, Consumer Price Index, to community risk, to community risk reduction fees or increasing those.
Yes, Honorable Mayor.
I mean, did you actually see a trend? Because normally you don't see CPI connected to this.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, yes. So the nexus is, as you know, the CPI is, is a, essentially the inflation marker for...
Right, for housing.
Exactly. And, and what we have noticed over time is that the cost of doing business goes up, but we, and we attempt to adjust it on a regular basis. At times, it can be done quickly, at times, it takes a few years, and prior to my time in this position, it took seven years to do it, resulting in a very large increase. These fees, we've been working on this fee structure going on three to four years to right-size how we're doing this. That's why we're in this, in this proposal, we're reducing some fees and increasing some fees. What the CPI for us does, allows us to maintain our resources to provide services to the community, both residents, businesses, and visitors consistently. And again, with following council policy, we're going to continue to revise those fees up or down as necessary going forward, to revise the fees as needed based on legal requirements, things like that. So the nexus is that we're trying to maintain the resources available to do the job of the people and of the community, and by keeping that CPI increase on an annual basis, it keeps us in line to be able to do this and not have to play catch-up, and as we've seen, that's been a difficult thing for us to stay on top of.
Right, and, and I guess I'm having trouble envisioning it because the, our costs are mostly labor-intensive, right? Yeah, and, and we don't do CPI adjustments every year, so I guess I'm, I'm still wondering.
If I could jump in for a moment, and Honorable Mayor, we have extensive experience looking at the CPI urban within the fire department, because our ambulance fees, for example, are based on a increase of CPI urban. So we've been able to see what the general increase is, and it's about 2.4% a year on average as it goes. When you look at the city's cost of labor contracts and increases in our contracts for the dispatch systems, and for the cost of our, our training and our, our certifications and our equipment, it mirrors roughly close to that. So as Chief Parsons identified, the goal is not to have to come back to you every single year and continue to adjust the fees. We will be able to do the analysis as necessary for the time, when, when the inspectors, if technology or, or time of the inspection changes, we'll be able to come back and say, we got to make a change here because this is taking us longer or this is not. But the actual costs have increased, the known salary increases that are occurring within the MOUs that cover these positions, on average, CPI is not probably going to be keeping pace, but as Chief Parsons identified, it's going to make the increase when we do come back less than us having to catch up for multiple years of no, no increase. So it just, it, it follows with some of the water fees that are signed by the city, and it follows our ambulance fees that are tied to CPI urban.
Okay, so you, you anticipate that with this adjustment, automatic adjustment, you're still not going to be net neutral?
Right now, we're a little shy of cost recovery, it's just a safe way of doing things. So when we looked at the, the numbers, we took the low end of some of the salary so that we don't run afoul of, of being, of charging more than the cost of doing the service. So we try to make sure that we're just below it, but we're right-sizing it, and by doing the CPI urban, that's going to allow us to keep pace as we go without exceeding. Our, our goal is not to be exceeding, that the fee exceeding the cost of providing the service.
All right, thank you. Okay, there's a motion in a second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is item number eight, 19, adoption of a resolution approving the initial study slash mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approval of the alignment for the coastal rail trail project from Oceanside Boulevard to Morse Street. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence. Some members of the public.
Staff.
Staff.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, are there any correspondence and our petitions?
The city clerk's office has not received correspondence or petition on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and begin testimony with Massima Mohamadi, project manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Massima Mohamadi, Associate Engineer, working for Engineering Division. At tonight's meeting for the coastal rail trail project... I'm sorry, it seems like it doesn't connect with the monitor. Sorry about that. At tonight's meeting, staff recommends city council approval of the alignment for the coastal rail trail project from Oceanside Boulevard to Morse Street. Also, staff recommends city council approval of the coastal rail trail initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. A little background on this project, the regional coastal rail trail is a 44-mile bike and pedestrian facility that spans from Oceanside Boulevard to, sorry, from Oceanside to San Diego. This project completes the final segment of the city's coastal rail trail between the Oceanside Boulevard in the north and the Morse Street in the south over the Loma Alta Creek. A mitigated negative declaration was determined to be the applicable environmental document for this project. Here is the project location for the proposed project alignment. As they noted in blue, on the north, it's at Oceanside Boulevard, and the south, it's at Morse Street, and it's along the NCTD railroad in the eastern side of the rail Here are some main features of the project. This project will have a 14-foot wide path fenced on both, both sides, and it consists of 10-foot wide paved path with two-foot shoulders. Also, this project will have a prefabricated steel-thrust bridge with a concrete deck. A feature to that bridge is an observation deck. Also, within the buccaneer park, we'll have a vegetated retaining wall. On this slide, on the top-left corner, there is a small map that I described in previous slides. There are three distinct cross-sections for this project, from north, from Oceanside Boulevard to Loma Alta Creek. As you see, there's a north cross-section on the top right, and it shows the 14, 14-foot wide path of this cross-section. All cross-sections are looking north. The middle section consists of a bridge structure spanning Loma Alta Creek. The width of the bridge will match the width of the trail on both sides, on the north and on the south section. The picture in the bottom-left corner shows the south cross-section from Loma Alta Creek to Morse Street within the buccaneer park. It's an elevated paved path for the pedestrian and bicyclists. Here is the existing NCTD bridge. As you can see, there is a bridge for the trail over Loma Alta Creek, and the future bridge will be parallel to this bridge and will be fenced on both sides. Here is the rendering of the proposed middle section of the proposed alignment. As you can see, there is a, there are fences on both sides, and there's an observation deck, which is a very special feature of this proposed alignment for the middle section across Loma Alta Creek, and the resident can enjoy the environmental feature of this project or the area from this observation deck. Here are two pictures of the existing condition at buccaneer park. On the left picture, you see the rail track on the back of the picture, and the rendering on the right side shows the retaining wall, vegetated retaining wall, and you see a small section of rendering of the bridge over Loma Alta Creek. This elevated path will minimize the impact, the impact to the park and reduce potential conflict between the rail and park users. The city of Oceanside Bicycle Master Plan has deemed this project as a priority project, and this segment completes the coastal rail trail through Oceanside. A regular coastal permit and coastal development permit and NCTD permission will be needed and will be obtained in the final design of this project. In conclusion, staff recommends city council approval of the alignment for the coastal rail trail from Oceanside Boulevard to Morse Street. Also, staff recommends city council approval of the coastal rail trail initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. I conclude my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mohadi, Mohamadi, sorry.
Mohamadi.
Thank you. This is a public, time for the public to speak. If you have, if you would like to address this issue, and this issue only, please, you can rise, approach the podium, we have two podiums, give your name, and then you have up to three minutes to speak on this item.
Hi, this is Katie Taylor. I apologize for not looking into this item more thoroughly before attending the meeting this evening, but I just had other priorities. I've been working extensively with North County Transit District and the city of Carlsbad regarding the homeless issues in Carlsbad. One of our big issues is finally was coordinating between North County Transit District and the city over law enforcement, because the rail trail in the Carlsbad area is, has been a magnet for homeless tents, and they finally passed some new ordinances, and we're finally getting some measures that will give enforcement more teeth to maintain these areas, because right now, I can tell you in Carlsbad, it's bad, and we're having to work on it every single day. What I'd like to know is who is the policing authority over this rail trail? Will it be North County Transit District? Will it be the sheriff? Because the sheriff is the one who actually enforces any North County Transit District right-away areas, and if you do this project before you have new ordinances to impact and, and control the homeless situation, which Oceanside is way behind on, then I would recommend you do not approve anything until you've addressed those issues first. And I, I give full credit to North County Transit District, they've been wonderful to work with, we got Rotary Park in Carlsbad cleaned up, but you are begging for trouble if you... We got Rotary Park in Carlsbad cleaned up, but you are begging for trouble if you don't address that first and go with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else rise. Okay, we've got one other person.
Hi, I just had a question because you didn't mention anything about cost or finances in this.
Thank you. Okay, I see no one else rising. Did we have any requests to speak?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and go to staff, back to staff, and respond to the questions that were posed, please.
Honorable Mayor and council members, regarding policing this area, this project is in prelim design, and this project has not finalized the design, and we are far from the construction. The staff will make sure by the construction time and utilizing the path, we'll coordinate with the police department to make sure that we will address the resident's concern. Regarding the budget for this project, currently, we identified $500,000 for the remainder of the design. The staff applied for cycle five of Caltrans grant, but we didn't get that grant. Staff will apply for cycle six, and the deadline for that application is next June, June of The staff will apply for the construction and construction support of this project.
Thank you. So asking optimistically if this were to be approved today, three, four years completion?
Yes.
Plenty of time to address the issues.
Exactly.
And see how our homeless shelter is doing. Hopefully, we'll do well. So any other questions that were asked? There was the cost, and then there was that. Okay, thank you. Back to the council, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you for this. This is a preliminary item, and there will be a public process, and I encourage the public to participate because we definitely don't want to have some of the impacts that Carlsbad is experiencing right now, for sure. The coastal rail trail and the inland rail trail, I mean, these have been on the books. This has been a plan for, gosh, over 25, 30 years now, or even more. And Sandag, as a part of our tax dollars, the planning on this is stating that the complete rail trail, which some cities have it completed, others don't, Vista's section's about to get put in, but the connection from Melrose all the way to I-5, which would pretty much connect everything, is 10, 20 years out, and there is zero funding availability right now. I serve on Sandag, and I'm struggling to, I'm literally to the point of begging the fellow board members to meet commitments of HOV lanes from the 78 through Vanda Grift and the intersection there with the 78 and I-5. The bikes can't even cross, pedestrians can't even cross there safely, and that's supposed to be built by 2025. And there is zero funding allocated toward that. So we're struggling right now to get the funding we need that taxpayers have paid into, and so, you know, I understand some of the frustrations on homelessness, but at this juncture, this is just the planning dynamic for this, which is, you know, required to move things forward for alternative modes of transportation. And so I definitely support this, but I understand the public's frustration on some of these future concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to say, this is so long in coming, and the community has been really asking for this for a very, very long time. So I'm really happy that we're finally at this stage. I was hoping we would have been at this stage 10 years ago at least. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt the resolution and prove the alignment. And yeah, it's going to be another three or four years, I know, but hopefully, that's if we can somehow use either our Transnet dollars or if there's other funding available. I see no lights. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda is item number 22, and that is my request to appoint Councilmember Peter Weiss as our new deputy mayor. That's my motion. Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the intent. I would suggest that, based on the rotation, that it should be Councilmember Rodriguez, as I mentioned to you, and I would support Councilmember Rodriguez being deputy mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that, Councilmember Weiss. At this juncture, I'm in a position, I think if the mayor's unwilling to make an alternative, I'm fully satisfied with Councilmember Kyrmse's position, and we can save some money on not having to change out business cards and parking signs. And I think Deputy Mayor Kyrmse's doing a fine job, so I'm just fine if the mayor has no alternatives to keep it as is.
Okay, I don't see a second, so I'll withdraw my request. Thank you. So are, at this time, going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting to Wednesday, December 15th at 3:30 PM? Thank you.[1771.47][1771.47][music]